County health officials.
Our camera's got a preview of the massive, week-long street cleaning set to take place in downtown Skid Row starting August 13th. Local leaders are calling it "a new day" in a community widely regarded as the nation's homeless capital.
It's the beginning of an effort to say that the needs on Skid Row are not only about policing and cleaning, but it's about providing social services on the spot.
That cleanup to target a six-block area between Fifth and Seventh Streets here in Skid Row. During those seven days, county health officials say they will be trying to speak with as many people as possible to offer free health and psychiatric screenings, also supportive housing. But even they'll tell you, this will not be easy.
We're going to help as many people as we possibly can.
Mike Arnold from the L.A. Homeless Services Authority says one of the biggest challenges is not enough resources, not enough room at Skid Row shelters to house all of the homeless people who will be displaced during the spray-down.
Where do they go specifically?
Around the corner to a street that isn't being cleaned. I mean, there's not... I mean, the good news is, is that there really isn't the same sort of pushing them out into the broader community that went on years ago.
Operation Healthy Streets, now a collaboration between the City of L.A. and county health officials, will not end homelessness, but is part of an outreach plan to make life on the streets a little easier: approaching people directly and telling them where to receive free tuberculosis testing and how to apply for Medicaid.
A lot of them are at their last-in-last row, but they don't know where to go. They don't know how to get the resources. A lot of people aren't even from L.A. They come here, and nobody's out there telling them what resources to go to.
But perhaps this will help. The city has now stepped up its week-long street cleanings from quarterly to bimonthly. And officials say community outreach will be taking place weeks leading up to every hose-down. In Skid Row, Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Local officials also promised to collect data on housing placement and medical coverage during the cleanup. "The Road to the Future" is paved, in this case, with lots of potholes. Those are the findings of City Controller Ron Galperin's latest audit of the Bureau of Street Services and its pothole repair program. Anna Marcos has the details.
One of the city's two aging asphalt plants served as backdrop for the city controller's announcement. Ron Galperin's latest audit, "The Road to the Future," claims the city's pothole repair services are inefficient and costly. Outdated technology and incomplete records are also a problem.
I live on a street that's a mess. The concrete is cracked, potholes pop up every few feet, the road is actually crumbling. And in fact, the street I live on is rated F by the city.
The audit also shows the Bureau of Street Services, which makes street repairs, failed to collect $190 million in fees owed by utility companies for tearing up the streets, money that could have fixed more potholes.
We need to look at who can we collect from that is doing damage to the streets? How can we actually get much better cost accounting on the work that we're doing? How do we reduce the cost of asphalt that we are spending on right now when we know we're paying way too much for it?
One example of the inefficiencies is this asphalt plant itself. Modern plants and technologies can recycle 50% or even 100% of used asphalt, but this plant can only recycle 10%.
Bureau of Street Services managers say they will cooperate with the audit in spite of limited resources. But they say, right now, there isn't enough money to repair the worst cases: streets with a classification grade of D or F.
These streets require major repair on the base, sub-base. Basically, you have to remove the entire structure of the street. What we have today is the result of decades of chronic underfunding.
Galperin recommends the bureau find new sources of funding and that it improve its analysis and record-keeping, and prioritize important streets, as well as enhance its technology. He will revisit the bureau's progress next year. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
To find out what grade your own street has, visit controlpanel.la. As controversy continues to swirl around the issue of unaccompanied minors crossing the border and heated discussions regarding what cities, states, and the government should do to deal with the influx, Rasha Goel reports on what several city leaders say Los Angeles needs to do.
Several L.A. City Council members recently called for immediate support and humane treatment of unaccompanied minors coming to the U.S. from Central America. Fifty-seven thousand minors, mostly from El Salvador, Honduras, and Guatemala, have crossed into the U.S. since last October. It is expected that number will rise to 90,000 by the end of the year.
In 2008, the Congress passed and the president signed the William Wilberforce Trafficking Victims Protection Reauthorization Act of 2008, and makes it illegal to send away unaccompanied children from those countries. The children arriving from Central American countries fall under this provision and cannot and simply cannot be turned away.
Those who oppose undocumented immigrants say they are a burden on the community. In the city of Murrieta, busloads of immigrants were stopped by protesters.
This is not a time for us to stand in judgment. It is a time for compassion, and we must help.
Of the 57,000 minors entering the U.S., 30,000 have been placed with relatives or sponsors while they await immigration hearings.
I think it's time for us to think about how we will make sure that these children are treated upon arrival as we move into reunification and legal proceedings.
They're children. We need to be there for them. We need to be able to offer them social services. We need to be able to give them mental health services.
According to reports, the Obama administration is seeking a $3.7 billion package to deal with what the president is calling "a humanitarian crisis." I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
The children's arrival has sparked debates in many states over how to pay for shelter, food, and education for the children. It's about community solidarity and crime prevention, and there was plenty of that to go around as the Southland celebrated National Night Out. Yana Kaye reports.
Business owner Lindsay Hollister is welcoming customers at a booth she set up right in front of her pie store in downtown L.A.'s Arts District. She's just one of many vendors who are taking a united stand against crime in her beloved neighborhood by participating in National Night Out.
We're still downtown, you know? We're a big city, so definitely things happen, and we have definitely felt the presence of the LAPD helping us out when we've had issues. And just being here in the neighborhood and bringing awareness to the safety of it.
This is the 31st National Night Out crime prevention event, and it offers an opportunity for police officers and community members to get together and network, exchange ideas, and build stronger relationships with each other.
This is where we get to talk, usually under non-stressful situations, where they get to know us. The community wants to know their police. They want to know their officers, and this is how we get to do it.
A number of Southland cities are taking part in National Night Out, including many from the West Side and the Valley. Past events have included cookouts and block parties. And here in Sherman Oaks, there was certainly no shortage of neighborhood spirit or food trucks, as residents came out in droves to mingle and take a stand against crime.
We've had historic lows in crime, not just because of great policing, but because we have the community that is a part of that partnership of looking out for their neighbors.
Los Angeles Mayor Eric Garcetti was joined by Los Angeles Police Chief Charlie Beck. They say communities can become even safer when residents know and trust their local police officers.
Building communities is extremely important to keep a neighborhood safe.
And by the looks of it, this neighborhood is one tight-knit community. Resident and mother-of-two Erin Amos says events like these help her feel safe.
I think it's great because we get to go get out and meet the officers that are protecting us specifically in the neighborhood, and it's good to meet our neighbors and have fun.
All the neighborhoods around here are all connected. We all communicate with one another.
And when communities look out for each other and have fun together, it's a win-win for all. I'm Yana Kaye for L.A. This Week.
Started in 1984, National Night Out is traditionally held during the first week of August. And the issue of crime and violence is also a big concern shared across the nation by schools and universities in every community. A recent gathering brought the realities of campus violence front and center as educators and law enforcement officials try to find solutions.
SC, over 20,000 undergraduates, almost as many staff, some Saturdays, well over 100,000 people at events.
At the first-ever campus safety conference hosted by Campus Safety Magazine, LAPD Chief Charlie Beck was invited to speak to school administrators, school security personnel, and other concerned individuals. While crime is at historic lows across the country, Chief Beck says there's the other side to the pendulum.
The sheer volume of active shooter incidents on our campuses, the tremendous disparity that we face between the very poor and the very rich that drive some crime that affects our campuses.
In 2012, two USC graduate students from China were gunned down outside one of the victims' apartments, just blocks away from campus. Two men were arrested for the murders. And just last month, another USC graduate student from China, 24-year-old Xing Ranji, was beaten to death with a baseball bat as he walked home from a study group. Four teenagers ranging from 16 to 19 have been arrested.
Events are happening around the country on a daily, weekly basis, whether it be a sexual event or an active shooter. There are more and more universities in K through 12. Educators are looking for ways to help get the message out to protect their people as best they can.
Vendors also attended the conference, providing information on security tools ranging from high-tech surveillance systems to mace and pepper spray to keypad security door locks. Another tool money can't buy, LAPD Chief Charlie Beck says at the end of the day, cooperation between the school, the local community, and local law enforcement is critical in keeping our schools safe. In the case of the 2012 murders of the two USC grad students, two suspects were arrested. One of them pleaded guilty and is now serving two consecutive life sentences. Legends of professional skateboarding helped the city open its newest skate park. Gil Reyes reports on the impact it's having in the community of Boyle Heights.
These skateboarders practice their drop-ins without police dropping by to spoil the fun.
We go into street spots where they kick us out, send the cops after us, and now we have a perfect place to practice.
Hundreds turned out for the opening of Boyle Heights's newest skate plaza in Hazard Park, a 10,000-square-foot thrashers paradise with stairs, rails, and ramps. The cost: $320,000. Money was raised with the help of pro-skateboarding icon Rob Deereck.
I think something like this, that's a great alternative athletic for kids, may be misunderstood because it's a newer sport, but I think when they see how much use it gets and how many kids enjoy it, I think anyone that was opposed to it would change their mind at this point.
Compared to other outdoor activities like cycling, for example, skateboarding has received little love from the general public. It's banned in most public spaces, so skateboarders oftentimes have to practice at night, in parking garages, busy streets, and other areas where safety is compromised. Councilman Jose Wezar wants to change that. He's now opened two skate parks in Boyle Heights, home to a large skateboarding community.
At the end of the day, it gives them the exercise they need. It gives them a place to be, safe. And after we opened the first skate park at Holmback, I had a lot of constituents tell me that, you know, they see a lot more kids at that skate park, and they like it because there's less of them on their driveways.
Skaters say the sport offers an alternative to games. Parents say they're happy their kids are practicing here instead of on the street. Another rad playground to land your tricks. In Boyle Heights, Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
The California Endowment and Diamond Supply Company helped secure funds to make the skate park possible. Filing a damage claim from the LEDWP trunk line rupture in Westwood, the mayor prepares to review the performance of every single city department head, and the mayor talks salary hikes for LAPD officers. These stories and more in City Beat. Los Angeles police officers, dressed in white Union t-shirts, recently showed up in force at City Hall demanding salary raises. And a week later, the mayor chaired a closed session meeting of the Executive Employee Relations Committee regarding collective bargaining instructions for the Los Angeles Police Protective League. He had this to say at the conclusion of the meeting.
Making sure that we can recruit officers at the right salaries and retain officers who during the recession came in at a lower level remains a priority, and that's something that we need to do together with the union.
The mayor says the city is also preparing to work with the United Firefighters of Los Angeles City regarding pay hikes for the city's firefighters. If your vehicle or other property was damaged during the Westwood Sunset Boulevard trunk line rupture, you're able to file a claim by going to ledwp.com/claims and downloading a form. Claims can be sent via email at ccenter@ledwp.com or by email to the L.A. Department of Water and Power, Attention, Claim Section, PO Box 51111, Room 342, Los Angeles, California, You are asked to write UCLA claim on the envelope or in the subject line of your email. When Mayor Eric Garcetti first took office, he actually required every city department head to reapply for his or her job. Throughout the past year, the mayor and his staff have worked with the general managers and their departments to set goals and to establish metrics for measuring and reporting departmental performance. And now, the mayor's office has announced that the mayor has begun his second annual review of every city department head in order to hold them accountable for their performance. Since taking office in 2013, the mayor has appointed 10 new general managers, including Chief Ralph Torazas to the Los Angeles Fire Department and Marcy Edwards to the Department of Water and Power. You're looking at a composite sketch of a man police a sexually assaulted woman walking inside Depp's Park in the 4200 block of Monterey Road. The first incident was reported in January of this year when a woman walking in the park was groped by a Hispanic man on a bicycle. Then on June 25th, a woman told police a Hispanic man on a green bicycle exposed himself to her. The latest incident was reported on July 20th. This time, the suspect reportedly was armed with a knife and grabbed the female victim by the shoulder and struck her. The suspect is said to have short, dark hair, to be around 20 to 25 years old, and five foot seven to five foot eight, around 140 to 160 pounds. Volunteers helped mark Councilman Gil Sadio's first year in office by spotlighting his Keep It Clean campaign. Anna Marcos takes a look.
This is what a community cleaning up its act looks like. Residents and Councilmember Gil Sadio's District 1 are celebrating the one-year anniversary of the Keep It Clean campaign.
We've been successful in partnering with the Bureau of Sanitation and cleaning up 289 alleys. We've been able to pick up tons of trash.
Curbside bulky item pickup? Forget about it. City leaders in District 1 have launched a pilot program that picks up bulky items from inside your own house.
Bureau of Sanitation will come to your house and pick up your bulky item, whether that piece of furniture, whatever it may be, they will take it out of your house. You no longer have to place it down the sidewalk for pickup. This is the newest change in bulky item pickups. We think that this will keep the streets a little cleaner.
And so, the volunteers come in all shapes and sizes: tiny debris sweepers, big weed shovellers, enterprising rakers, and everything in between, all ready to make their community a cleaner, safer place to live.
Cleaning up the community and being something positive can be done and can continue to be done. Lead by example.
But a few dozen volunteers can't do it alone.
Since we've spent a year and over a million dollars in cleaning this community, we want to make sure that the message is out that we need to keep it clean.
With a little luck, maybe more in the community will pitch in. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
The in-house bulky item pickup pilot program could spread to other districts. The L.A. Dodgers, by the way, also helped in the cleanup. It's got miles of jogging and horseback trails, picnic areas, and plenty of outdoor recreation. But now, visitors to Griffith Park can also get their hearts pumping by using the park's outdoor gym. Yana Kaye reports.
Located by the Crystal Springs picnic area in Griffith Park, visitors will now be able to work up a sweat thanks to this brand-new exercise equipment.
This is a great opportunity for people who want to come and do a little bit of exercise. It's a nice, safe way to try out some new exercises. I think it's a great addition to the park.
Three, two, one.
City officials and community members held a ribbon-cutting to introduce the new fitness zone, which features 13 stations of workout equipment and is conveniently situated near baseball diamond, golf course, and popular walking trail. Councilmember Tom LaBonge gave a shout-out to fellow councilman Mike Bonin, who represents the West Side.
See that, Mike Bonin? You got Muscle Beach, but we got it here, too.
The fitness zone is part of the Department of Recreation and Parks' goal to bring health and fitness to communities in Los Angeles.
Physical activity is so important, and in this day and age, we need to really concentrate on that, so I'm very happy to see this come to life.
The Department of Recreation and Parks says fitness zones have proven very popular among residents because they're easy to use and accessible. I'm Yana Kaye for L.A. This Week.
In this week's List of Things to Do, a celebration at El Pueblo, Marilyn the Exhibit, and a renowned photographer may be taking your picture. The El Pueblo Historical Monument, better known as Home to Olvera Street, is celebrating 130 years of the Plaza firehouse on Saturday, August 16th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the El Pueblo Historical Monument, located at 125 Paseo de la Plaza. El Pueblo will be celebrating this historic milestone by showcasing antique fire rigs and apparatuses on the plaza and rarely seen photos and artifacts. There will also be living history performances courtesy of the L.A. FD Historical Society in the Pico House at 11:00 a.m. and 1:30 p.m. Go to Facebook slash L.A. This Week, where we posted information on the event. If you are a Marilyn Monroe fan, you likely already know about this exhibit at the Hollywood Museum, located at 1660 North Highland Avenue in Hollywood. Commemorating the 52nd anniversary of Marilyn Monroe's passing, Marilyn the Exhibit returns to the Hollywood Museum, showcasing an intimate look at the actress's life and legacy. The exhibit showcases Marilyn's gorgeous gowns and personal wardrobe, including the one and only million-dollar dress she wore on her USO tour while entertaining 10,000 troops in Korea. The exhibition also features photographs and documents from her private files. The ongoing exhibit will be on display through the end of the month. For dates, times, and ticket prices, go to thehollywoodmuseum.com. Gary Leonard is an L.A. treasure. He's photographed the city's milestones, people, and happenings since the 1970s. And on Saturday, August 16th, he'll take a photo of you. That is, if you show up at the L.A. Central Library's free event hosted by Photo Friends of the Los Angeles Public Library. L.A. Observes Kevin Roderick will talk with Leonard about his amazing career and show some highlights of his Take My Picture photos. Mr. Leonard will then take a group photo of the audience after the presentation, which will take place from 2:00 to 3:30 p.m. The Central Library is located at 630 West Fifth Street downtown. Go to lapl.org for details. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. It could well be the dance event of the year for many residents of Watts. We're talking about the Watts Senior Prom. Anna Marcos shows us how it made some senior citizens feel special.
This is like no high school prom ever. For one thing, the promgoers have been out of high school a while, and for many, it provides a trip down memory lane.
Oh, yeah, a long way back, a long way back. See, I'm an OG from Watts. I'm an OG from Watts. I've been here 67 years, and that takes me back to where I come from.
And who is the dashing young man now entering the dance hall? That is Councilmember Joe Buscaino. His office teamed up with the Watts Neighborhood Council and the Department of Recreation and Parks to put on the Watts Senior Prom, the first such event ever. There is an age limit. You have to be at least 62 to get in, unless, of course, you're a council member.
It gives an opportunity again for us to praise our seniors, love them, and thank them, and let them know that they're not alone.
There were extra goodies like awards for the youngest and oldest senior citizen.
Thank you.
Buscaino was going to bring his 92-year-old grandmother. Instead, he gave her the victory award for surviving a fall which made her unable to attend, so his mother accepted in her place. And just like in high school, you can't have a prom without a king and queen. No chaperones needed here. All in all, a day to remember for years to come. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
City leaders say they may hold the Watts Senior Prom as an annual event. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lecityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
Sergeants, can you please start calling the council members in their offices as asking them to make their way down? Are there any current committees taking place? Mr. Clerk? All right, council members, please start making your way to council chambers. Our new city clerk has just arrived in the chambers. Our soon-to-be new city clerk. With a procession following her, a flowered procession, appropriately so. Welcome to Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, August 13th, 2014. We're going to start off first with a presentation by the great council member, Tom Labange. Tom, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I have with me Al Cortez. Give him superintendent, special superintendent for L.A. Unified. And why I brought Al in here is just to make us all aware about the great program the Los Angeles Unified District has in called Beyond the Bell. As you may or may not know, members, one of my first five or six jobs in life after selling the Herald Examiner on a street corner was with Youth Services, L.A. Unified at John Marshall High and the after-school program. But it has advanced much further beyond that into the outer stratosphere, that if you participate, you graduate. If you get involved in school life, you will have a better life. And the Beyond the Bell is just that, and I'm just so proud of Beyond the Bell. I wanted to give them recognition. So all of you, Mr. Corretts, you know about Beyond the Bell? You sure do. He's an Hamilton High guy. He knows about Beyond the Bell and how, what do you do? What's the better program, at Marshall or at Hamilton for Beyond the Bell?
Since you're standing next to me, certainly at Marshall.
Oh, very good there. But all of us here, we're so fortunate to have our backgrounds in Los Angeles. Most of us here, but to salute you for what you've done, because it does take a person. It does take a person to, let me assist right here. Let me get you right through. You want to sit right down here? There you go.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Excuse me. It does take a person to lead, a conductor for the orchestra, a quarterback in the huddle, members in a district, a mayor, a governor. But Al, you've done that for the city of Los Angeles. And this program provides an excellent program for the after-school program. It's the largest volume of volunteer workforce in Los Angeles. The volunteers who help are so key to that. I like stay late and graduate. And all your work, you were a former principal at what school were you a principal?
Oxnard Elementary.
Oxnard Elementary in North Hollywood. That's Mr. Kocorian's district right there. Six years ago, Beyond the Bell, under your leadership, took the action to help students expressing interest in leadership in schools to participate, as I mentioned, in all the variety of after-school programs. And I just wanted to salute you at this time. So behalf of Mayor Eric Garcetti, our mayor, who knows and supports your program, on behalf of the members of council, Al Cortez, I thank you so much, and I want to give you this big, 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 big presentation.
I appreciate it.
Give him a big hand. Here we go, one more. Thank you.
Thank you for this honor. One of the things that I will mention is we have a national cyber patriot program in which we have students competing from around the country. We have numerous high schools involved, high school teams that get involved with the process with the Air Force Association. Last year, we were fortunate enough to have one of our teams be the national champions. They competed against 3,000 other teams across the nation. So the team from North Hollywood High School are the cyber patriot champions of the world. As we know, the cybersecurity is one of the issues that faces us in the future, faces us now, and so we're trying to prepare our students for that as well. One of the things that I like to do is receive something is also give something in return. We are very fortunate to have had a friend, many friends on the city council, but one specifically, Mr. Tom Labange, has been a true advocate, not only for the students of Beyond the Bell, but the students of Los Angeles, and is an advocate for every school, not just Marshall High School. So on behalf of, and this is rarely given outside of the school district, but on behalf of Beyond the Bell, I would like to present to Councilman Tom Labange our Beyond the Bell Award for going above and beyond the call of duty as an advocate for children.
Al, I thank you very much. There's the bell. I can still hear it at Ivanhoe Elementary, at King Middle School, at John Marshall High, and it's so important. And all of us members, and I really wanted to focus on all of us, San Fernando High right here, working hard. Go Tigers.
There you go.
All of us, Mr. Fuentes, wants to help you in a way that helps students, because I wouldn't be here standing today if it wasn't for L.A. Unified and Beyond the Bell and the athletic programs that they had.
Great.
And the great industrial arts. All that being said, let's have another hand for Beyond the Bell, L.A. Unified.
All right, let's give them a round of applause. Thank you so much. Well, let's go ahead and take some of the agenda items. Again, we do have a quorum. We're live broadcast on Channel 35. We also stream live on the Internet, although I'm not sure if we're streaming today since our city clerk is here. We are streaming live. And with that, if we could, please call the roll.
Bloomfield, Bonn, Buscagno, Sadio, England, and Fuentes, Weisar, Corresca, Corian, Labange, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Wesson, 12 members present in a quorum. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And if we could take the first order of business.
Approve over the minutes.
Okay, Mr. Fuentes moves, Mr. Weisar seconds. Next item.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Bonn moves, Mr. Bloomfield seconds.
Mr. President, the Office of Finance recommends that Item 2A be received and filed inasmuch as the taxpayer has been granted in an administrative hearing. And the Department of Building and Safety recommends that Item 1A be continued to August 27, and that Items 1B and 1C be received and filed inasmuch as the liens have been paid in full.
Great, okay, that'll be the order without objection.
Very good, sir. Items 1 through 6 are items noted for public hearing.
Okay, those items are noted for public hearing, and do we have cards on any of the particular items?
Item 1, sir.
Okay, we'll hold that for cards. That leaves 3, 4, 5, 6, 3, 4, 5, and 6.
And 2B, sir.
And 2B. And 2B has no cards?
That is correct, sir.
We'll go ahead and take that up now as well. Members, those items are before us. Any specials from any members on those particular items? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the roll on those items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Right, those items are approved.
Mr. President, Items 7 through 22 are items for which public hearings have been held. Items 7 and 22 should be held on the desk until such time as the committee reports have been circulated.
And Item 7 is being held by Mr. Bloomfield as well, and 22 will be held for the committee report to be...
Mr. President, I'm told that Item 22 has now been circulated.
Okay, so those items are before us. Members, do we have any specials? Mr. Corretts?
Item 21, please.
21, we'll go ahead and hold that on the desk. Other items, members? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the roll on those remaining items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Those are approved.
Mr. President, Items 23 through 36 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll for consideration on those remaining items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, those items are before us now, and do we have cards on any of those particular items?
Yes, sir, we do. We have cards on Items 23, 29, 30, and 31.
And I believe that we have a request for Item 30 to be continued for one week, which would take us to August 20th?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, so that'll be the order without objection? So we'll go ahead and remove that item and continue it for one week? On those remaining items, 24 through 27, I believe are ordinances?
Yes, sir, 24 through 27 are ordinances.
Okay, so we'll take up those remaining items. Do we have any specials on those remaining items, colleagues? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the roll on those remaining items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Item 1, I believe.
Mr. President, we do have Items 37 through 39. They're item scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
Yes, we'll go ahead and hold those for a closed session, and we'll adjourn at that point into a closed session for those particular items, unless 37 or 38, any of those items that can be taken up now in open session. Mr. Kocorian?
Yeah, Mr. President, I think Numbers 37 and 38, unless members have questions or concerns, their standard settlements and budget and finance recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendation for settlement. So 37 and 38 could be disposed of now, and I believe 39 and 40, when we get to that, will need to be in closed session.
And 40 will be on the special agenda. Okay, so 37 and 38, we can dispose of those unless any of the colleagues have any questions on those matters.
Mr. President, if I may read the settlements. For Item 37, in the case entitled Anthony Garrett at All versus City of Los Angeles, there's a recommendation to expend $500,000 in settlement. And for Item 38, in the case entitled Michelle Jordan versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $550,000 in settlement.
Okay, great. So those items are before us, colleagues. We'll go ahead and open the roll on those two particular items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Those are approved. We'll go ahead and hold 39 then on the desk. We don't have to go into the special meeting. There's one item that's going to be called special for that now anyway, unless Mr. Kocorian wanted to take up the special meeting now?
We can't do that until 11:55, sir.
It says 10:15. And here's an updated sheet that says 11:55. All right, well, those are still mine there. Okay. All right, so 11:55.
Mr. President, if it is your pleasure, the committee report for Item 7 has been circulated, and if you'd like to take that up, you can at this time.
Mr. Bloomfield, would you like to take up Item 7? The floor is yours. Oh, wait. There's a lull in the act. We're going to pause. Not yet. So we're going to wait until some of the other members are all around. Okay, so we're going to hold that, continue to hold that item for a moment. With that, we'll go ahead and then take Item 1 for cards. On Item 1? Okay. John Walsh, followed by Mr. Herman. We're going to keep applause at a minimum today. We don't want to disrupt the meeting. Unless you're at the podium, thank you. Good morning, John.
Good morning, John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential, and just tweeting @HollywoodDems. Again, this concerns appeals for building and safety. Just the other day, someone showed up here, didn't know what was going on. Batman showed her how to file, and she's not going to have to pay the lien. Or if she has to pay the lien, and some of these liens are very high, it will be at a much smaller rate, because a lot of people don't understand, this is a suggestion by the city. Anybody that comes up here who has a lien, who speaks out against the lien, will get a substantial reduction in the lien, because the liens are essentially, some of them are essentially bogus.
Mr. Herman, the floor is yours.
I see that we discriminated and chased off one of the gentlemen here to speak on Item C, Mr. Enrique, for the record. And he's in District Herb Wesson at 5741 West Venice Boulevard, AKA 5743 West Venice Boulevard. A lien, a lien again, for a measly $1,446.18. And why? Because the fellow gentleman was coming here to speak in his own native language and was discouraged because he speaks Spanish. discouraged because he speaks Spanish, and you representatives say you're for the refugees who speak only their indigenous Spanish-speaking language? How ridiculous is that? How ridiculous, Herb? You cannot handle HNIC for your constituents for this bogus lien? I demand a federal investigation by the FBI for these illegal liens. The provisions of these liens are racist, discriminatory, and in violation of the state, local laws that you impede upon the public's interest to dissolve, remove. HollywoodHighland.org, John Walsh, has made it clear, and Batman, Batman representing all of you, made it clear. So, I come back to you and say, stop the illegal business for the taxpayers, do courteous business on behalf of the taxpayers, and HNIC stands for what? Heck, no, Negro in charge, head Negro in charge.
Thank you. All right, Steve, I guess is prombida.
Good morning, Counsel. Our office is managing counsel retained on behalf of the lien holder. We just actually wanted to make sure that a written concern with respect to the proposed lien for entry on the secured tax roll had been received and reviewed. That was it. Unless the counsel has any questions, our objection was served and filed on the 1st of August pursuant to the lien notice, so that's it.
Okay, thank you. National Boulevard? No longer present? Okay, we'll note and file your card. Enrique Marin? Marin, Enrique? I thought I saw somebody coming up, yeah? Coming up to the podium?
Sorry, I think you called my name?
No, no problem.
It's Ramiro Liccona?
Yes.
And I am coming here and also for a lien into my property. I got a fine for having some flags in front of my store that I removed immediately, the fine was $250. And also, they gave me a penalty for, because after, at my store, I have my building since 1994, at 8940 National Boulevard. In 2001, in 2001, I got a, in order to comply, that I did, then Inspector Gordon Kane said everything was fine, 2011, Inspector Alba came back to my place and gave me another fine. I have to spend about $20,000 to do, actually, to the building, actually, nothing, all paperwork, okay, that I did. Now, the $250 fine for the flags that I removed is $5,000 plus, okay? I've been many times to the building and safety buildings, and nobody ever told me also that I can contest that to them. Today, here, there is a gentleman that approached me and said that I can have done that, they can do this, but the less worth, I'd like to have that removed. If I had to pay the $250, well, I pay that, but $5,000 for something that really is ridiculous. Everybody has those flags around Los Angeles. My building, 8940 National Boulevard, had no flags. Building next to is full of flag, across the street is full of flag, and the other side of the freeway is full of flags, okay? And so, you just seen...
They're targeting you.
Yeah, it's just targeting me for some reason, I don't know. I have the picture here of my building, and the building next door, you'd like to see it.
Okay, sir, and I believe we've got staff here to address this as well.
Sir, sorry?
Hold on a second, sir, please. I'm asking staff if they can please comment and respond to this, because I believe it was a receiving file on it.
Sure.
Is that correct?
Yeah, well, I've talked to this gentleman for a couple of minutes, and I've recommended that he talks to the inspector, so we're gonna talk to the inspector and see what happened, but according to the department, this property owes $5,531.90 for citations he was issued way back in 2012, for which he has failed to comply, so there's a, we have a back-and-forth with him. We've had it for the past two years, so I recommend that we continue this for two weeks while we have the inspector take a look at this.
Okay, great, then that's what we'll go ahead and do based on the department.
Sir, excuse me?
This is not gonna be a conversation, you got your two minutes, and, excuse me, sir, I'm actually, this is a very good thing for you.
Okay.
We're gonna continue it to allow you to see what you can work out with the department, rather than vote right now and assess it. In fact, we'll give you another week, we'll throw in another week, we'll give you three weeks. So, we'll give you three weeks, which will take you, no, actually, we're gonna give you, we'll give you even more, we'll give you a month, because three weeks takes us into council recess in the League of Cities, so 30 days from now, September 12th, we'll give you another month to work this out with the department, meet with the inspectors, present your arguments, and come back here, which, rather than just vote on it now and leaning the property, so we'll go ahead and set it all aside, give you another month to work it out, and we'll bring it back here on September the 12th. Okay, so that'll be the order on that. And if we, if you could, if you could just go to the side over here, the velvet rope, sir, and we appreciate that you came in and shared these issues, and we want to confirm your address as well, so we make sure we have all the information, okay? Thank you very much.
And, Mr. President, I'm told for clarification from staff that that's Item 1G.
1G. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, Mr. Clerk, where does that take us? Item 7, I believe.
Mr. President, we do have some items remaining for Item Number 1, sir. I believe it's D and E.
Okay, we don't have any additional cards on those.
Oh, F2, sir.
Okay, and we don't have any cards on those either, so we'll go ahead and open the roll on those remaining items, and close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Right, thank you, that'll be the order. And now, we'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Bloomfield on Item 7.
Great, thank you. I'd like to call Ms. Walcott to the table.
Yes, please.
Colleagues, we have an opportunity here to confirm Ms. Walcott. She's been the interim clerk for the last year, and she's done a fantastic job during that year, but equally important, for 26 years, she has been a member of the city family and has seen the city in a variety of different perspectives, whether it was with CLA, LAPD, Aging, LAFD. She has analyzed the city from every which angle, and all of that knowledge and experience and acumen is something she brings to the table as our new full-time city clerk. So, I'm very excited about it. We had her come to ITGS Committee, we had a rigorous cross-examination, we examined, we overturned, undertook every rock, we went and delved into her past, and she came out just brilliantly shining colors and was able to answer all of our questions. So, I don't have a lot of questions, I'm just gonna ask you basically two things, you know, one, to just share a little bit about your vision for the office, and I know, I'm excited about you bringing us into the 21st century with the technology that we talked about in committee, and even helping document some of the 20th century issues, because you've been working so hard on getting those old documents up online. Want to hear a little bit about your vision, and also give you a chance to introduce your family. You've got family members who are here, who are supporting you, you've got your extended city family, and we're all here, but you have your actual family here as well, so I wanted to give you the floor for a few minutes to share your vision and make some appropriate introductions. Ms. Walcott?
Thank you, Councilman Bloomfield. Good morning, council members. My name's Holly Walcott, and I'm the interim city clerk, hopefully soon to be the regular city clerk. As Councilman Bloomfield said, my family is here today, my mother, Carol Sanborn, my sister, Ginger Fredericks, my niece, Samantha Fredericks, my father, John Walcott, my stepmother, Donna Walcott, my two best friends from high school, Deb and Steph, and my stepbrother, Jimmy, and of course, the entire family, city clerk family is also here today, and I can say, having worked for the city clerk for the last 10 years, that they are the best staff at City Hall, and I really appreciate all of their support. As far as my vision moving forward, in very simplest of terms, I see the city clerk's role, or the office of the city clerk's roles, as two things. We are process, and we are information, and our mission is to serve. So, how do we do that? We do that by making sure our processes are efficient. We have done everything we can for the council processes to take them into the 21st century by automating and moving things to a database environment, and so things are available on mobile devices. Going forward, we will also hopefully have a new voting system for the council, be able to annotate and bring up your agendas on mobile devices. For the election, we are looking to move that into the 21st century as well, working with the county to get a new election system. We are trying to do everything we can to get old archives online, and so that they can be researched from the public, no matter where they are, and key is to communicate with the public how they hear information today, so that's maximizing the use of social media, and really answering questions and providing the best service we can. So, happy to answer any other questions.
Okay, let's move on to Mr. Labange, Tom Labange. Holly, thank you very much. You touched all bases there. If you're a ballplayer, you hit way out of the park, and working with the county is so important, because what's sometimes frustrating the voters is they go to an election, and it's a county election, and they vote here, but when it's a city election, they vote there. So, working with the county, maybe we could figure out what we have to do. What a beautiful family that you have. I hope you take the time to go up to the Tom Bradley Tower, and I just will close to say, I always check with department staff, you know, on how they think I should vote on this issue, and I did check with department staff, and the staff member said, "You better vote for her." So, good job, Julie.
They know I will beat them if they don't.
Oh, no, you won't do that, we gotta send you to HR now. Mr. Wezar?
Thank you.
And the archives, and the help we could do with the Historical Society, and all that availability. Thank you so much, Mr. Wezar.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, and Holly, this is a year too late. I think the choice was obvious when our very capable previous city clerk retired. I have found you to be very thoughtful, engaging, and everything we've asked of you as a council to research this, research that, how do we increase voter participation, you put all the options for us, and we've had some very thoughtful conversations and discussions because of that. So, I want to thank you for your service, and, Mr. Bloomfield, you haven't overturned every rock, you haven't spoken to her two best friends since childhood who are here, so make sure you talk to them before you vote. You might come up with some new things, I'm not sure, but Holly, it's just been a pleasure. You've been committed to your job, and we have, let me say this, oftentimes, overworked you and your staff. We've asked for a lot, so we appreciate all the city clerk staff for all the work you've done as well. A tremendous amount of responsibility is placed on your shoulders to make sure that our elections continue to have integrity, are thorough, and the run with immediacy that people want results, so thank you for your work, and I look forward to continue working with you.
Thank you.
Okay, before I call on Mr. Bouskayeno, I do want to say that I thought I saw June Lagme running around being a photographer today. And what I do want to say is that June came and found me in an area on this campus that only a few of us go to, and had a conversation with me about her moving on, and I'm sure that she's extremely proud, because from that moment on, in her mind, you were the only choice, and... So, somebody's excited. With that said, Mr. Bouskayeno?
Thank you, Mr. President. Can Channel 35 get that shot of June just now, jumping up and down? June, it's great to see you, we miss you, we love you. Holly, congratulations on what I'm assured to be unanimous vote here. As a senior lead officer, we had an opportunity to raise money for our teen CPAB conference, and at the time, Janice Hahn, now Congresswoman, Janice Hahn was very supportive of our efforts, and I remember having applied for GCP funds in raising money and getting these dollars for our teens in the Harbor area, and some of the frustrations I had, I just dreaded applying for dollars in Janice's fund. Give me your thoughts, even today, as now, as a council member, we've seen a delay in providing those resources, those dollars for nonprofits across the city. Give me your thoughts on streamlining the GCP payment, and just to help our nonprofits and get those dollars specifically on those nonprofits that need to put on events to support their causes.
Thank you, Councilman Bouskayeno. I have a long history with GCP. My first job at the city was the GCP analyst, so I'm very familiar with that program. Kind of the, some of the problems that we faced in the early 80s, or late 80s, was funds were being given to organizations, and they weren't providing proof that they actually provided a public service. So, it's illegal to give a gift to public funds, so what we do is contract or provide funds for special services, and so what we can do to streamline and still maintain the integrity of the city's funds is to perhaps put the application online, help them fill it out. There is still going to be some time required to, I mean, it's part of the city's contract procedure, so if we can get everything, all the documents that are required by the Charter and Administrative Code, so we need to work with the other departments, contract ad, and the Controller's Office, to make sure that there's a way to get those documents that is less frustrating for people. But there's still going to be, you know, some hoops that people have to jump through to safeguard the city's funds.
Very good, and using technology as a piece to help expedite, and I'm glad Mr. Bloomfield's leaving that effort here throughout the city. So, congratulations, Holly. Look forward to continuing to work with you.
Thank you.
Mr. Englander?
Great, thank you. I just want to stand and echo the accolades of my colleagues. I've had the honor, privilege of working with you for over a decade now, and you've always been the go-to person. And when I was the chief deputy and I had to get things processed right away, I knew who to call to get things done, and you're breath of fresh air, you're always thinking about how to be innovative, cutting-edge, and making sure that all the stuff we're doing reaches the public. Everything that comes through your office is so important, whether it's what Joe's talking about, and processing critical dollars for community groups and nonprofits, to everything else, and it's just such a long laundry list of what comes before your office that's so important, and you've just been an incredible person to work with, and I can't, can't wait to sit down and actually just cast my yes vote, so congratulations, look forward to continue to work with you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Fuentes?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Walcott, can you name all of the clerks for whom you have served?
Elias Martinez, Mike Carey, Frank Martinez, Karen Calfayan, June Lagme.
So, I want to also share...
So I want to also share in the accolades that everybody has mentioned and I think as evidenced by your response of Mr. Buscaino, that institutional knowledge is absolutely critical to the success of the city. And with all due respect to my colleagues, we just occupy these chairs for a short term, but the clerk, the CAO, the CLA, they are the backbone of this city. It is their knowledge, your knowledge, your stewardship to the city of Los Angeles that makes us accountable and prosperous and hopefully in line with the vision that our predecessors have put before us. And so I'm absolutely honored to continue working with you because like Mr. Englander, I've known you for the better part of 10 years now. And I'm so happy to see that your family is here to be able to share this moment with you. It's not often that we get to celebrate what it is that the city of Los Angeles does right and you are clearly an example of that. So congratulations and I look forward to working with you, I don't know, hopefully another 10, 20 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Okay, with that said, Madam Clerk, could you please open the roll? Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Congratulations. Fourth with.
Thank you.
And members, at this time, I'd like to ask our city clerk to join me in the president's chair. I've been given the honor to swear her in. So if I could have Holly come forward and I'd see if you could get the mics and then after this, members, we're going to immediately take a photo with Holly's family and her and all of us. For our first number, Holly and I are going to sing "You Lost That Loving Feeling." If I could please ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I state your name. I, Holly Lynn Walcott.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Charter of the City of Los Angeles.
And the Charter of the City of Los Angeles.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of city clerk.
The duties of the office of city clerk.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Madam Clerk, congratulations.
Thank you. Ah, I can't do it right, hold on. Sorry.
Relax, it's okay. You got to leg it, leg it, leg it.
Okay. Yeah, it is an end.
Now, Holly, why don't we take your family and Mr. Labange, if you can help me, let's see if we can get enough seats for them seated around the table and we, the council, will come and stand behind you. How's that?
Can I just?
Okay, wait. Holly wants to say a couple of words. Go right ahead.
I just.
Madam Clerk.
I just wanted to say that yesterday, Councilman Blumenfield talked about the tiny shoes that I had to fill and I really do owe a lot to June Lagme, but I do want to say that she actually has very large feet. We like to call them clown feet and I'm really honored to have her here today.
All right, we're going to go back to the agenda and some of the items. What's this piece of paper that I have that was left here? It says here, "I, Holly Lynn Walcott, do solemnly swear..." Oh, we did that. Check. Congratulations again. Okay. John Walsh on items 23, 29, and 31. And there's a request for item 29 to go fourth with. That'll be the order without objection.
John Walsh, logging at HollywoodHighlands.org or JWalshConfidential or tweeting at HollywoodDems. Number 29, the appointment of Mr. Aaron Thomas to the Community Forest Advisory Committee. They're doing a great job there compared to the LADWP. We haven't had a single forest fire in the city of Los Angeles since God knows when. We've had a huge flood that made headlines all over the world, but we haven't had any forest fires. I understand you hold these meetings, what, every 10 years at a picnic table at Griffith Park? You're doing a wonderful job and incidentally, in order for Mr. Aaron Thomas to get this job, he had to hand in a letter of resignation from the same forest fire advisory committee, undated, so that the mayor can get rid of him at any time. Tom Bradley never did that. Richard Reardon never did that. James Hahn never did that. Only our new political correct mayor makes you resign before he'll allow you to actually take office. Number, and also he's never been caught with kiddie porn, Mr. Thomas, unlike one of your appointees up here. And he's doing a good job compared to the people you appointed on the DWP Commission who, as we know, are responsible directly for the worst flood in the history of American cities. Number 29 is more equine farrier services, more police horses. This is Horsegate, Cowflop, Horsepucky Gate is continuing. This is a man named Charlie, Charles Esaw, who is going to, he's going to execute the Third Amendment to the LAPD contract. You can execute whoever, any contract. Please, LAPD, don't execute me. I have white skin, that protects me. And I'm going to tell you, if I was, had black skin or brown skin, I would have been killed by the LAPD years ago. Okay, $30,000 Mr. Esaw receives for equine farrier services. I give you $100 to your favorite charity if you can tell me what equine farrier services means. Number 31 is regarding the allocation of funds to this district for, portion of these funds for sidewalk reconstruction. So if you live in this council manic, maniac district, number eight, you might see a little bit of improvement in your streets. As you know, we have the worst sidewalks in America, most poor, and then you step onto the worst roadway in America. And then if you get hit by a car, the ambulance is the worst traffic in America. And what are we doing up here? Oh, we're celebrating some new city employee with beautiful pictures, lots of pictures. Number 31, you should vote 100% against, this is Parks and O'Farrell's Overhill Facade Improvement District. The streets are falling apart. People are tripping and what are you interested in? Taking selfies of one another. HollywoodHighlands.org for what I wasn't able to say here because I didn't have the time. Stay tuned for public, general public comment. And I give you a present of my remaining 10 seconds.
All right, Herman on 23.
Residents of Los Angeles, from the mayor, the appointment of Mr. Aaron for the habitat of our forestry with a drought. How will we save the billions of trees and shrubbery without the appropriate appropriations of funding for our forestry? You could provide many jobs for forestry. Incidentally, Mr. Fuentes doesn't see it important and he came from Sacramento where there are millions and billions of trees. So Batman reaches out to you, the public. Fix LA, fix our forestry. For what? Batman returns on behalf of all you so that we can fix the issues in our forestry, that we can provide public interest in what? What? Mr. Aaron Thomas to the Community Forestry Advisory Committee for Habitat, for Griffith Park, and all other parks. Save the forestry, save our wildlife, save us bats from extinction. For the foolishness of this council is uncompassable, Labange, because we want our forestry protected not at local level, but by federal level, Mr. Fuentes. And Mr. Blumenfield, thank you for not responding for, again, folks, Batman is back, Mr. Englander. Beep wee.
I feel safe. Okay, so with that, we're going to go ahead and open the roll. Come 23. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, great. We're going to go ahead and go into item 21. We do have cards on 21 and I just want to let you know that we've actually already had public comment. Public comment was already held and satisfied on that. We do have a request from one of the council members to reopen public comment for those particular cards. So we're going to compromise on that because we do have a long agenda and numerous closed session items. And we'll go with a minute on each on 21 from the podium. First one, Akala.
Hello, I just got back from Guadalajara, Mexico. There's no shortage of water over there. There's way too much water. You should see if you can find a way to truck water from over there to here because there's an excess of water over there. Well, yeah, we're talking about the previous item, but in this item, I don't even know what the hell it's all about, so.
Okay, so then, thank you very much. Thanks for sharing. All right, we're going to have Lisa Cody followed by Jennifer, followed by Timothy, followed by Rashad. followed by Rashad. Yes, yes, good morning.
Good morning. My name's Lisa Cody. I'm a member of the Fix L.A. Coalition and SEIU. I've studied this deal, and so have experts, including former investment bankers. We all agree, it's not a good deal for the city. And after defending this deal for years, the CEO's office has finally acknowledged that if they knew what they know now, they would've never entered into this deal. Los Angeles got ripped off, just like other cities and public entities, all over the country. And I have no doubt that the city of L.A. was not adequately advised on the risks of this deal. The CEO's reports suggested that they... That 20- to 30-year swaps were just normal, part of what was available on the market. That, however, is not the case. In the private sector, swaps are typically three to five years. So we're basically dealing with a form of derivative that doesn't exist in the private sector. So the city gambled and lost, and the game was probably rigged from the beginning. Over the life of these bonds, we calculate the deal will cost $247 million. We believe that, under the law, Wall Street firms have a duty to deal fairly with the public. The city is, in essence, an abused consumer. And there are some actions you can take. You can take legal action.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Jennifer Maldonado, and I represent Fix L.A. Coalition. I am part of an organization called Inner City Struggle, which is a nonprofit located in Boyle Heights. We demand our city leaders to vote yes on renegotiating with Wall Street banks. Fix L.A. is our motto, to invest in fixing our communities rather than invest in Wall Street. As one great city, together we can hold Wall Street accountable for the divestment and draining of our public goods, services, and jobs. One interest rate swap deal with Bank of New York Mellon and Dexia Bank will alone cost Los Angeles taxpayers nearly $5 million a year. The consequences are dire for the people in Los Angeles. We lost nearly 5,000 jobs. We cut public services. We have neglected damaged roads and ignore park cleanliness. We should stand together as one of the biggest cities to renegotiate or terminate toxic swap deals without penalty. Los Angeles can be sustainable for our local Angelinos.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Timothy Butcher. I'm a city employee. I work for Street Services, the Resurfacing Division. I fix your streets. I am a member of SEIU 721. I'm a shop steward. I'm a member of numerous joint labor management committees, and I'm currently on the bargaining team for our contract. I'm here on behalf of Fix L.A., and I'd like to speak in favor of Councilman Corret's motion to renegotiate these bad deals, these bad loans. I don't know a whole lot about high finance. I'm just a truck driver. But I do know if I go to a bank and they give me a bad deal, I don't deal with that bank anymore. And I don't understand why the city can't use the same kind of concept on some of these big banks, saying, "Hey, help us out," or, you know, "We're not gonna deal with you anymore." We spend more in fees than, like, twice what the budget of Street Services is. I just want to fix the streets, me and my colleagues. Help us, please. Try and get the money from these guys so that we can fix your streets. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good morning, council members. My name is Rashad Rucker. I'm a part of the Fix L.A. campaign as well as... Our Fix L.A. Coalition, as well as Community Coalition. First, I'd like to invite, if I may, all of Fix... All the members of Fix L.A. to stand, if you may. We are here standing in support of the motion that is before you. This is a great step in holding our banks accountable... Holding the banks accountable as well as saving the taxpayers millions of dollars in the future that can be invested back into resources that can ultimately, once again, really fix our streets. I pray that the council will pass this motion and continue moving forward in passing motions like this and bringing... And holding these banks accountable as well as bringing money... As well as saving taxpayers millions and millions of dollars from these banks. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Corret.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. The city's core fiduciary, moral, ethical, and operational duties are to ensure that we minimize the amount of taxpayer dollars that leave Los Angeles and maximize the amount of those dollars that we have to fund the services that our residents need. On an annual basis, the city of L.A. utilizes the financial services of Wall Street banks to help fund critical programs and services for our communities. Like paying for construction of public facilities, including police and fire stations and other neighborhood facilities, we issue debt to publicly finance infrastructure projects, such as street and storm drains, using wastewater bonds. However, the city winds up paying hundreds of millions of dollars in fees to Wall Street banks in order to cover the cost of services like debt and investment management. Now, in 2006, the city made a decision to refund its wastewater bonds in order to take advantage of, what were at the time, historically low interest rates. Instead of refinancing into a fixed-rate bond or into unhedged variable-rate debt, the city opted to hedge against rising interest rates by using a relatively new type of public financing. Synthetic fixed-rate bonds achieve through entering into a interest-weight rate swap. The assumption was that, under ideal conditions, the city would only make a fixed percentage payment to the banks, and in exchange, the banks would make a variable-rate payment to the city that would substantially cover our interest-rate payments to the bondholders. This sounded like a good idea. However, in reality, entering into swaps meant that the city would be unable to refinance this debt when and if the opportunity presented itself without having to pay a prohibitively expensive termination fee. Had we issued plain vanilla variable-rate debt, the city would've been able to take advantage of what turned out to be historically low interest rates. To add insult to injury, like many other municipalities, the city was lured into swap deals for what was a previously unheard-of 22-year period of time. In the private sector, swap deals are made generally for one to three years on average, rarely for more than seven years. So not only are we stuck with this deal because of the nature of the swaps, unless we pay an exorbitant termination fee or remove ourselves from the deal, we're stuck in this deal for 22 years. We have no flexibility to take advantage of reducing our debt costs, which ties up our money that could be spent on other much-needed city services. While swap deals were promoted as a way to make investments safer for municipalities, they instead spread confusion among municipalities who were enticed into taking on more risk than they ever realized. It is important for you to know that today, we're not being asked to vote on terminating doing business with New York Mellon or Dexia. That's a question that'll have to be left to another day. However, what is equally important in the recommendation is the request to have the city attorney determine if there are any potential legal remedies that the city may pursue against those institutions involved in the wastewater swap deals. Our window of opportunity to pursue certain legal actions may close as early as September or October of this year. Therefore, it's vital that we approve these recommendations immediately so that the city attorney can explore the city's options to potentially recover millions of dollars, as other cities have looked at doing or have already done. Members, we need to hold Wall Street accountable where others have not, and let Wall Street know that we're too big to ignore. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. And... Mr. Huizar.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Corret, let me thank you for bringing this before us because, in fact, we struggle year in and year out to balance our budget. There are decisions that have been made in the past that really don't get uncovered or talked about. It's really paper money that we don't see, that only the Wall Street people know what they're about. And I think this is one of many that we could probably uncover to look at what deals we have made in the past and whether it makes sense now or not. You know, there's nothing wrong with going back to a bank, even if we made our own personal decisions and our own hostholds, to say, "Hey, this wasn't what we expected. This is what the result we talked about. This is not what we negotiated. Let's go back and reexamine that." Especially if we're talking about millions of dollars are impacting the lives of millions of people. This is a step in the right direction to reexamine where we can get more funding for sidewalks, for our streets, for tree trimming, those basic necessities that, when I ask, "Hey, why can't we have more funding for these things in my district that have been like this for decades?" We're told we have no money. Mr. Corret, you're on to something this, here. I applaud you for that. And let's move on and examine more of these deals that were made in the past. Thank you, Mr. Corret.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much. Could I ask the CEO staff to come up, please? I just had a couple of quick questions, and then I'd ask you to explain your chart. But one of the things I was wondering, because of these financial institutions and the instruments they use, did the banks we deal with still own the instruments that we initiated? Or have they been packaged, or sold, or discounted to other banks? Are we dealing with the right people when we mention two specific banks?
We are. The two banks still continue to own the swaps. In the case of Dexia, there's been a number of significant changes on the ownership. Dexia is a European-owned bank by the governments of France and Belgium. It has gone through bankruptcy twice, and it's essentially in the process of eliminating all of its banking activities in the U.S.
Okay. The other thing I was wondering about is, we evidently got some either savings or something in the initial phases of the swap. Is the expectation that if we go forward, that we would be returning those or minimizing them in addition to cutting off business with the banks?
So if we were to terminate the swaps, we would still have to refinance the existing debt that exists. And so an analysis would have to be done to determine which instrument would make the most financial sense for the city.
But let me ask you this, you know, finish your thought, and then I'll ask you one other question.
No, I'm fine.
Okay. The other thing, have you met with these banks already?
Yes.
Is what is their general perception about our request to refinance? And whether they walk away from the future interests and things like that?
About a month ago, I met with representatives of both Dexia and New York Mellon in New York City. We shared with them the motion that had been introduced. We expressed to them the concerns from the community about how these swaps were arranged. And we asked them directly would they renegotiate those swaps without triggering the penalty linked to them. And at that time, the representative of Dexia informed us that he was not in a position to do that, in part because the governments of Belgium and France own the bank, and they would not permit it. The representatives of New York Mellon expressed interest in identifying and working with us another instrument to refinance this debt under a different construct. However, they did say that they would not do it at a loss to them.
Now, could you just explain the chart that you gave us today, what this means, and kind of walk us through it?
Sure. So there's two elements to this chart. The top talks about what were the options that the city had at the time that the swaps were introduced. And we did a look back to see, had some other options been pursued instead of the swaps, what would that have resulted in terms of a cost or benefit to the city? And so the first section talks about doing nothing. How much would the city have paid over the life of the bonds if there was no refinancing, there was no swap? And the total number for that would be $573 million over the life, if you look at the bottom of the do-nothing column. The next is, what would have happened if the city would have pursued a fixed rate? A fixed rate at the time was approximately 4.3%. The cost, the overall payment to the city would have been $568 million. Now, under the swap arrangement, the cost to the city is expected to be $524 million. At the time, it was reported to be less than that. So the question is, and the legitimate issue that's being debated here is what was reported and what ultimately happened. And so here, you can see the variance between what was projected at the time and ultimately how much is projected to be spent. The final section is to simply wait and be able to refund the swaps at the time that they were callable. And that would have been $563 million. So when you look at the options that the city had at the time, even today, the swaps are the most cost-effective option when you look back. So that's what the first, the top section. The second section looks at what are our options currently? If we do nothing, there's a projected of $420 million. If the swaps are terminated and refunded with a fixed-rate bond, then it'll be $443 million. And if they're terminated using cash to pay off a portion of them, as well as a penalty, it would be a base of $373 million. We would all have to identify cash to pay off the penalty, and then an unknown amount to refinance the remaining of the debt at variable rate. So the issue before us is an appropriate one, to identify ways to terminate the swaps without triggering the penalty linked to that. And so that's the direction that the council's asking the city attorney to come back. What are the legal ramifications or the potential of being able to do that from a legal perspective? I could tell you, having met with representatives of those banks, we've made that request, or I made it on your behalf. And so far, they have not said yes. And if there were to be action from your council, we would go back to them and make the same request.
My final question is that, based on the motion, basically, you're on a research mission to come back to us?
Well, you're directing the city attorney to come back with legal options, and you're directing us to go back to the banks and make a request on your behalf to terminate the swaps without triggering the penalty. And so we will do that. We'll come back and report on what the options would be, should they not agree, and then proceed accordingly. It's important to clarify one important fact here that not $1 associated with the swaps is general fund. So these dollars cannot be used to pay for police officers or to pave streets or to trim trees. These dollars are specifically for the wastewater program. It's against the law to use these dollars for a purpose other than what they're intended to be used.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Corret to close.
Yeah, just a couple of things. One, I'd point out that our lack of success in negotiating so far could partly be a factor of the CAO saying that, hey, this is a fine deal, and we've done as well on this as anything else we could do. So if you assume that, they have no basis with which to negotiate with us. I don't think that's the case. And it's interesting enough, if you look back at all the different hearings that have been held... Let me quote a few of the things the CAO and his representatives have said. "Trust me, I'd like to get out of it." I mean, we look at it monthly to see if there's an opportunity to get out of it. It's just not economically feasible to terminate the rest at this point. The bottom line is, we still ended up ahead. The swaps are saving us money. If we were to look back today, and I know what I know today, of course I wouldn't have done a swap. I'm gonna... In a hearing in 2010 with Mr. Alarcon, he said he was going to instruct the CAO to negotiate with these banks, and if they fail to negotiate in good faith with a good deal, then we have no interest in doing any more work with that institution. CAO's office response was, I think that... CAO's office response was, I think that would be great. Mr. Alarcon said, you gotta fight fire with fire, that means you gotta negotiate, stand your ground and fight to get what you deserve out of a deal, instead of allowing them to control us. CAO's office, we agree. Another hearing, I think we would have done maybe unhedged variable-rate debt, that would have been a possibility. I would have gone with variable rate and refunded into fixed debt later on. So, the CAO's office itself has said everything that's run the gamut, from this is a great savings, to actually, we would have done anything but this, this was the worst idea. And if you look back at the hearings, it's very hard to base any action on and have any confidence on an office that has said everything from it being a terrible deal to a wonderful deal. I think they have absolutely no credibility on this issue. And...
You can be mindful of your time.
And my motion does not direct the CAO's office to negotiate this, and I would suggest, although I'm not going to put it into the motion, that it be an entity other than the CAO's office that actually does this negotiation, because based on what they've said, they have no credibility with the banks and no incentive to get a better deal. When they've said, they haven't ripped us off, they've actually given us a good deal, although they've actually also said the opposite. So, I ask you for an eye vote to move this forward. Let's try to get some of the money back that we've been ripped off by these banks.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much. I was prepared to vote for it until we got to the very end. Who would do it other than the CAO?
That wasn't a motion, sir, it was just a statement.
No, I'm just saying, he brought it up. I'm just asking, who would do it other than the CAO?
Got it.
Being it's that, I think it should charter responsibility, right?
That's right.
I sort of want to find out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Kretz, did you want to speak again?
If it were at all possible, I would actually like to have the city attorney do it. But again, I'm not putting that into my motion. I think we should look at the most intelligent way to move forward after the city attorney's done their analysis.
Seeing no other speakers on the queue, we'll open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Thank you very much. Okay, we've got three other items for cards. Twenty-nine, thirty-one, and thirty-nine. Wanna call on all three items?
This is amazing, three items in one, huh? Communication from the city administrative officer. Wow, we got four minutes. Relative to the amending the Los Angeles Police Department, LAPD, contract with Charles Isu for the continued provision of Esquina Ferrier services? Wow. It all sounds like Chinese to me, but I don't know if it sounds any different to other people. Sounds very complicated. Well, my nephew is a police officer in Guadalajara, Mexico, and they had just recently killed a lot of police officers over there. So maybe this is a good thing, I don't know. Here, I don't mean over there. They keep killing them right and left.
You can stay on the matter, please.
Yeah. And then, motion Parks of Feral relative to the amending prior council action of November 18th, 2000, regarding the allocation of what? It's kind of cut off. You can't even read it.
Okay, if you've got to stay on the item, not just reading the item, that's not staying on the item, that's actually disrupting the meeting. So if you want to speak on the item, you can do so.
Reading the board is disrupting the meeting? I didn't, I don't know how, when a citizen wants to be informed, it does disrupting the meeting?
If you wanted to speak to the item, please.
I am, I'm trying to, I'm just trying to understand that it's so much legalese that ordinary people cannot understand what the hell you're saying. You know what I'm saying? Yeah, you know what I'm saying? All you do is you're damn legalese, right, city attorney?
He is not...
Okay, thank you very much. Herman on thirty-one.
Parks of Feral, have you continued to participate with this body for Title II discriminatory action and Section 504 state and federal regulations that you now are acquiring to what Lonnie in the amount of $800,000 for Council District Eight sidewalk reconstruction programs? How long? I have a motion here from a different Public Works motion under F-1 number 070113, a different councilman in fourteen, who can't even fix the goddamn sidewalks in Boyle Heights and throughout Los Angeles. What the is going on? Don't you get it? Batman observes everything. And you're way out of line when you ask Lonnie for various eligible sidewalk reconstruction projects for Council District Eight. A program? Stick to the real program. Obide by the law. Regulate ADA compliance, sir. Thank you.
Right, thank you. So that concludes the public comment cards on those particular items. Let's open the roll, excuse me, on those, both of those items, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That'll be forthwith without objection. And then we'll go ahead and, let's go into closed session on item thirty-nine. Do we have cards on thirty-nine? No cards on thirty-nine. So we'll go ahead and recess into closed session. So if we can, ask the sergeant to clear council chambers. We're going to stay in council chambers for this item. And we're asking on this particular item, principals only, so no staff, principals, CLA and CAO. Principals only on item thirty-nine. So, let's go ahead, if we can, ask Channel 35 as well. We're going to go ahead and go into closed session. We'll give them a moment to clear council chambers.
Okay, we are back in open session. On item 39, so we'll go ahead and... We're gonna go ahead and read the settlement on item 39 before we go ahead and vote on it.
For item 39, in the case entitled "Los Angeles Police Protective League, Stephen Lee Versus City of Los Angeles," there is a recommendation to approve a settlement which provides a four-step salary increase for certain Los Angeles Police Department police officers.
Now that item is before us, colleagues, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, that is approved, and we'll go ahead and move that forth with per Mr. Labonge as well, without objection. That'll be the order. That'll take us to general public comment. Robert Lucas. General public comment, Robert Lucas. Not here, okay. Brian Barajas.
Okay, I'm gonna reiterate, an August 30th meeting for all Americans to attend is gonna be at the THR OOP, Thrup Memorial Church, August 30th, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Please get all the details, call 1-818-630-7725. Now, just a indication of reality, I should indicate the following: We are in a space race right now. The only problem is, I think we choose not to believe that that's happening right now. Russia, China are collaborating, and all we can do in the United States is blame Russia for every problem that we have. That's impossible. You have just witnessed the fight of Americans against Wall Street. What LaRouche said is, "Go with Glass-Steagall." Why don't you just eliminate the bastards with that law? A complete separation of Wall Street. They have to disintegrate but without killing the American and taking other countries down with them. It's a first step, but we do not have a president who's committed to making that first step. The elimination of an empire, a financial empire, and I think more Americans are gonna have to go with LaRouche's program, and they have to understand it, because if you don't, we go into World War III, we go and eliminate ourselves, and where is the human species then? Nowhere.
All right, Herman. Followed by John Walsh, followed by Wannacala, and if you guys can line up on the second cell of the ropes.
It's Mr. Herman.
Or Batman. Fundraising lawmakers continue to make news, abusing you, the taxpayers, to compromise public trust. And Mr. Speaker there is abusing my right under Judge Ferguson, 2007, Salisbury versus the City of Los Angeles, First Amendment rights. I will use offensive language to get your attention, to do your damn job right for the public, sir, as Batman. Continuing, the evidence of abuse and corruption show little effort to comply by the law. In note, excite, a joke of Governor Brown has failed to excuse itself. And then the special election, LAUSD, McKenna, McKenna, you won! Hurrah, hurrah! For Maxine Waters, thank you, you're right, the best candidate for LAUSD. For you, unfortunately, Mr. Alex Johnson, and your special interests, Herb Weston, Jose Weisar, Krikorian with his head down, Janice Hahn, Diane Watson, Herb Weston lined up in support behind you, you failed! You failed! And again, in note, ADA compliance is about what? It's about fixing real issues of the government. LA Police, we've got your back. Better salaries, equal pay, and $57,000 to start as a policeman. Professionals. Yeah! And then again, going back to HollywoodHighlands.org and Dalha Zoo, we're back, Jack, and get it right, equal right, equal access, to what? What government issues are all about. No special interests. Eat it, big ears.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or at JWalshConfidential, or tweeting at HollywoodDems. Yes, we had an enormous victory. We had Mark Ridley Thomas vicious, vile sexual attack on George McKenna, saying he was soft on child molesters. I wanna know you, I wanna tell you, about 2% of the black community voted for his candidate, Mark Ridley Thomas, his candidate. The only votes that his candidate got were from racist white people, racist white people, and there are plenty in that district. Only 8% of the registered voters voted, but they voted the right way. Slam dunk for the black puppet, had his head taken off, he was defeated by George McKenna, a proud black man that we spent an enormous amount of time on his candidacy. Something you're gonna be hearing pretty soon about the murder in Florence, the police execution of Yzel Ford, a young black man on Florence Avenue. There're gonna be some huge demonstrations on that. The LA Times is now being run by Austin Butner. Remember when he worked here, LADWP? The first thing Mr. Butner is going to do is to get rid of the vile, vicious, sexist, racist editor of the LA Times, Mr. Devon Maharaj, who thinks because his skin is not white, he can attack black people, especially black people. They don't hire black reporters at the LA Times. We're telling you right now, the Glenn Daye love affair, you wanna find about the mayor's love affair and the job he gave his boyfriend, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Glenn Gate, Billy Gate, whatever gate, it's a lot of gates. A lot of gates open. And who the hell hired these people to govern over us? It was not the people, I dare say, 'cause the elections are not really very, very clear and accountable. I ran for city council, a lot of people told me that they voted for me, and city council said that I only got three votes. Give it a break, Jack. Anyway, what I wanna tell you is, I went to Guadalajara, Mexico, and, well, your streets are tame compared to Guadalajara. There's holes all over the damn street, there are sidewalks that are buckled like that. So, in that sense, you're a little bit of a better city, but guess what? We don't have as many homeless people on the street over there. You idiots, what have you done with housing for everyone? You made it so damn expensive that your own grandmother has to sleep on the street. You idiots, you fools, you think you're so wise, you're nothing but a pizza. Should I say shit or crap or what? Ah, we are the people, we're allowed to talk like the people. Not thanks to you, thanks to the Supreme Court. And guess what? If we don't get something done about housing for everyone, you're gonna have some hairy issues in the future, like your salaries are gonna be void.
All right, thank you once again for sharing. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and recess the regular scheduled meeting so we can go into the special meeting on item 40.
Very good, sir. Blumenthal, Bonnabuskian, Osidio, England, Fuentes, Weisar, Caress, Corin, Labonge, Martinez, Ferro, Parks, Price, Weston, 13 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President. Mr. President, item 40 is an item for which a public hearing has not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, go ahead and open the roll for consideration on item 40. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Great, we've got two general public comment cards on item 40. We're gonna have one minute on the clock, this is a special agendized item. John Walsh. Followed by Herman.
John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org. These are the two suspect trust funds with, I think, $20 million in it, that the head of the IBEW will not tell us how the money is spent. You've been fighting with them for quite some time. Where is this money going? You're not gonna hear them talk about it. It's the Joint Safety Institute, there's a lot of corruption there, it doesn't really exist, and the Joint Training Institute. The media has been on top of this, but we haven't heard anything about the payments that the trust will be made in an escrow account, and it will not be spent for a period of 120 days. This whole thing sounds rotten. Anytime they don't discuss it, that means it's a deal. It's going through millions and millions of dollars into the hands of corrupt union pockets. HollywoodHighlands.org.
News, in consideration of this motion, release of funds to the Joint Safety Institute? Is that transparency, what Mr. Walsh got through explaining to you, that there's a problem, an issue of concern to the public, and that concern is transparency? Mr. Price, Mr. Parks, Mr. Bond, and you guys know I'm right, that's why you're not raising the issue, to tell me to keep quiet because I'm offensive, like Mr. Krikorian always says. But I'm on topic, because Training Institute Trust is not for the elected officials to decide, it's for the decision of the public. The public, who's have advised you, with the provisions, you must, and I'm saying you must, Angelenos, understand what transparency is taking place.
Great, thank you. There's been a request, oh, Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for the clarity of the record, I don't usually say that Mr. Herman is offensive, because he's always offensive. When I stand up, I comment on when he's disruptive of the meeting, which is a legal matter, you know, as far as the continuation of the meetings.
Appreciate that, thank you very much. And if you have some motion to second the fact that he's always offensive, then you've got my support. Okay, so with that, we've got a request to take this matter into closed session. And so I'm gonna go ahead and honor that request, because there is litigation involved in this as well. And it very much involves and revolves around that litigation. And so with that, we're gonna adjourn to the executive conference room in the back, we're gonna recess into the executive conference room in the back. Principles only, we're gonna do principles only, so no staff. Point of information, Mr. Labonge. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and recess into the back. Principles only, in the back, only the council members, and no staff. And we can go ahead, channel 35, and put us into recess for closed session.
All right, are we back in session? Okay, what's before us, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, that brings us to item number 40. It's consideration of motion Wes and Krikorian, Fuentes, Blumenfield, O'Farrell, Labange, and Buscaino. And, Mr. President, there is an amending motion for that matter that's also before you. That's motion Wes and Labange that reads, "We therefore move that the council instruct the CAO, in consultation with the city attorney, to negotiate with all involved parties to resolve the litigation entitled Brian DRC et al. versus Ron Galperin in his capacity as the controller of the City of Los Angeles, and the City of Los Angeles versus Brian DRC et al., under terms that would include allowing for the release of the trust fund -- trust funds, pardon me -- contingent upon the conditions set forth in motion Wes and Krikorian, Fuentes, Blumenfield, O'Farrell, Labange, and Buscaino."
Okay, so we're going to vote on this motion as amended. All right, so let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, what other businesses before this committee, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
They're posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Announcements, if I could have everybody rise for journeying motions. Everybody, please rise. I'm going to look to my right, Mr. Labange.
Yeah, I think we should adjourn to remember Lauren Bacall, what a great actress, all the love that she gave to us. And when you think about movie stars, she was absolute movie star in the generation. To be 19-years-old, the mayor, Mary Humphrey Bogart, who was 45, and all those movies, and also the famous line that she said, you know, "Just put your lips together and blow." And that's heard around the world today and today. A wonderful woman who was a good friend of the City of Los Angeles, went here and helpful over the years.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, and just to add to that, she was a huge supporter of preserving our historic theaters here in the City of Los Angeles. And on Broadway and throughout Hollywood and other places, we have some wonderful theaters that her and others were calling at a time when we were destroying a lot of our historic theaters, really made an effort to use her influence to support. But a real classy lady that led us in Hollywood to open doors for many other people. She did more for us in Hollywood than we probably realized in terms of her impact in opening doors for women and others.
Okay, what other businesses before this committee, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, Council has motions for posting and referral.
They're posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Announcements? If I could have everybody rise for adjourned motions. Everybody, please rise. I'm going to look to my right, Mr. Labange.
Yeah, I think we should adjourn the memory of Lauren Bacall. What a great actress, all the love that she gave to us. And when you think about movie stars, she was absolute movie star in the generation. To be 19-years-old, and Mary Humphrey Bogart, who was 45, and all those movies, and also the famous line that she said, you know, "Just put your lips together and blow." And that's heard around the world today and today. A wonderful woman, who was a good friend of the City of Los Angeles, went here and helpful over the years.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Weezer?
Thank you, and just to add to that, she was a huge supporter of preserving our historic theaters here in the City of Los Angeles. And on Broadway and throughout Hollywood and other places, we have some wonderful theaters that her and others were calling, at a time when we were destroying a lot of our historic theaters, really made an effort to use her influence to support. But real classy lady that led us in Hollywood to open doors for many other people. She did more for us in Hollywood than we probably realized in terms of her impact in opening doors for women and others.
Thank you. Okay, now, there was a mistake on my part. We needed to, what to do what, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, I'm sorry. We needed to adjourn the special meeting and return to the regular.
Okay, so it's adjourned, we've returned. Any other adjourned motions? Then, members, this meeting is adjourned.